Council is called to order. And maybe have a call.
Mayor Shilling, here. Councilwoman Beltrame, here. Fleming, how are that?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
For and present. Uh, Councilwoman Beltrame?
I would move that we excuse Councilwoman Fleming because he is out of state.
Second? Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Wade Fleming for being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Trump, on you?
Mayor Shilling?
Yes?
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Yes.
How are that?
Yes.
Kerwin? McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passed. And our thoughts are with Wade and Spencer. Our discussion item tonight, we are pleased to have with us Barry Kemp of Barry Kemp Coaching for what seventeen?
Yeah, I've been in coach seventeen years.
Seventeen years with an extensive resume of groups that he has coached. And we are going to have a coaching, team building, goal setting session. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to start this? Okay.
So any context that you'd like to set up? I mean, John, I had numbers of conversations with John in preparation for our meeting tonight to go over a little bit of the agenda and what I would hope to accomplish with the city council. It was obviously through Mary Kerwin that the opportunity for myself kind of facilitating our conversation has occurred. So I welcome the opportunity to share some of the work that I do with business owners and other professionals. And hopefully, my intention today is to introduce to the council a set of skills and tools and models and ideas to facilitate your interactions with one another, your interactions with the public, to identify and prioritize the goals that the city so very much needs to make progress on. And hopefully, you'll be able to use and apply these tools on an ongoing basis to enhance your effectiveness as individual council people and as a group as a whole. Very basically, my first career, I was an educator. I worked in the Philadelphia public school system. Everybody in my family was an educator, unfortunately. As an educator, I made four, two dollars more a week on unemployment than I did as a teacher going for my master's degree. And so I'm a kind of lifelong learner. I'm interested in being the best that I can be. I'm interested in growth and development and helping other people do the same thing. So it was actually an inspiration that came to me when I was working for the Upjohn Company. So from education, I eventually secured a job with the Upjohn Company. So I was a pharmaceutical sales representative for the Upjohn Company. And I worked my way up through the corporate ranks of Upjohn in about six different positions. And Upjohn was famous for its training and famous for its development of its people. And it was a wonderful career of about twelve and a half years. Toward the end of my career with the Upjohn Company, they went through a total quality management initiative, which is a quality initiative, very much like a Six Sigma would be. And they literally invested in about 1,200 of us at the time. And what was interesting about that is they were really interested in us being individually and collectively more effective as an organization. And we were pretty good as, at the time. Unfortunately, after we went through the initiative of two days of, you know, high ropes courses and low reps courses and team building exercises and trust falls and all kinds of other things, when we got back to the ranch or got back to our offices, nothing was sustained. We didn't do anything to sustain. So one of the things that I'm going to encourage the council to do is to take the small and hopefully very powerful use of skills and tools and concepts that I intend to introduce today and look at where and how you can practice and apply these things in all aspects of your professional and personal lives as well as your dealings with one another. So that over time, we would create what we call stickiness. So it was around the year 1992. It was the year of the Barcelona Olympic Games. And I liked the Olympic Games and I liked the idea of winning a gold medal. So I was watching and they had a small documentary on the Olympic Village. And what we found out was in addition to learning how many pounds of pasta and potatoes that 5,000 athletes could actually eat, we learned that there was 2,000 coaches for 5,000 athletes. And that was a profound insight for me. So I realized that in athletics, coaching and peak performance were correlated. And every one of those athletes wanted a gold medal. So I thought, what an interesting idea, that gold medal performance is associated with coaching. What if we could bring an ongoing sustainable partnership with a coach in a business context to support individual and organizational excellence? So that was really my aha moment. I resigned from the Upjohn Company within the next nine months. And people said, well, what are you going to do? And I said, I'm going to be a business coach. And what they said was, what's that? And I just made something up. And I've been making it up for about seventeen years. Just a little bit of background, I had the honor to be the president of the International Coach Federation for Southeastern Michigan. I was on the board of directors of the Professional Coaches Association. And I was very fortunate and honored to be the very first master coach ever in the state of Michigan back in 1999. So for me, coaching is an expression of who I am and what I do. And I have the good fortune to work with some amazing, capable, high potential people in helping them achieve what they want. So if I'm the coach, that what is what makes that, what makes you, you're my athletes for the moment. And what you're up to and what you want to achieve is kind of the agenda here. So whatever the city of Troy gold medal looks like, when you articulate what your goals and your metrics and your action plans and all those other things, that's the gold medal. So as a council, my sense is, and I declare that you're all unified, that you want the city to be the best place possible to attract businesses, to attract our residency base, to improve our tax base and all the other things. So with that in mind, we're going to kind of jump into this. A couple of things I want to note is in front of you, you have what we call city council coaching questions. And these I modified from business coaching questions. And what I'm going to do is simply go over them verbally so that the citizenship can actually hear what we have to say and actually create this as a context for future conversations. But we're not going to go over these right away. So the first question says, what is currently working or going well in the city of Troy at this time? So if you think about coaching in athletics, athletes that are at the top of their game all have coaches. So this idea of good to great or from excellence to mastery is this idea of what's the next level. So in school, it would be, give me your A students and let's have them be A plus students. So as you identify what's going well and working within the city, we get to identify those good things that we want to be great, which is an area that you want to invest in. The second question is, what's not working or where you'd like it to be? These are things that you feel that collectively, we're coming up short on. We're not where we want to be and we're striving for additional excellence in those areas. The third question says, what do you expect to achieve as a council in the current year, given the plans and strategies that you have in place? So when we look at that, it's what's predictable? If we keep doing what we're doing, keep initiating what we're doing, keep working our best practices as a group as a whole, what do we expect to achieve for, for the council and for the city? So that's kind of like doing it on your own. The next question is kind of my favorite. What breakthrough results are you committed to producing? And this is a level of achievement above and beyond what you consider to be predictable. It's a nonlinear, almost a quantum leap of achievement. And that very often requires new and different ways of thinking. Number five says, what are the challenges and obstacles the city is currently facing? And one would guess that there's a few of those going around. So we want to look at what are the external challenges, maybe related to the economy or other factors, but also what are some of the internal challenges that we have as a council or as individuals? I often refer to the concept of a comfort zone. A comfort zone for an individual is their behavioral characteristics or their achievement traits, or even how they think. And that thinking sometimes gives them both the source of success, but also can become a limitation. So very often we'll say, those are paradigms or mental models that we have as an individual. And actually, groups have paradigms and mental models themselves. So sometimes breaking through those ways of operating is what we need to generate. And generally, it's the leverage of a better future that allows us to do that. All of those five questions allow you as a group to narrow and focus on those priority things that you're most interested in and say, these are the goals, these are the initiatives, these are the priorities that we most want to make progress on. So with that said, we will come back to those questions for dialogue and discussion after we kind of introduce a few of these skills and tools and so on. Any questions or thoughts so far? Okay. All right. What I'd like everybody to do is to turn in your little packets to what we call the communication toolbox. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to assert that relationships are actually the source of good results, generally in most cases everywhere you go, whether it's personal relationships or professional relationships and so on. And what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to go over through dialogue and discussion, six communication tools. So I'm going to, this is a little participation. I'd like each of you to give yourself a rating from one to 10. 10 is extraordinary, one is not very good. And I'd like you to rate yourself in the area of personal and professional relationship creation and sustainability. And just give yourself a score. And I'm going to ask some of you to volunteer to say, I'm a seven, I'm an eight, I think I'm a six and a half, I'm a nine professionally, but a seven personally, or whatever. Just to get a sense of where you guys find yourself, okay? So who would like to start off? I could call on you, by the way.
I'm Dane's already.
Dane?
I'm a six.
You're a six? Okay. Good.
I'm better personally than I am professionally.
So how would you rate yourself in those two areas?
Probably a six to a seven professionally and a four to a five personally, or double or round, you know what I mean?
Okay. All right. Who else?
I would say I probably rate higher professionally than personally. So I don't know, maybe a seven professionally?
Seven professionally?
Seven, maybe or eight. I talk all the time. I mean, that's pretty much all I do is work on relationships between attorneys and clients or people in city council. And then personally, I would probably be a little bit lower, maybe a six.
Okay, you guys are tough markers. Who else? Anybody else? John, can I pick on you?
Sure.
Okay.
I think I'm better professionally than personally and I'd give myself a seven professionally and a six personally.
Okay. So if 10 is the highest mark you could get, and if I also gave you permission that you could create an 11, there's a gap between where you are as individuals and, you know, where you could be. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each of these individual tools and we're going to dialogue and discuss them both as a technique that I want to offer and what's beneath the technique that supports this technique in actually improving relationships. And I invite you to look at all your relationships, all your professional relationships outside the council, your council relationships, your family relationships, your community involvement. And just think, what would be the value if I simply got good at these six communication tools? I believe this is a multi, multi, multi-million dollar page. For an individual, it's a billion dollar page in terms of improving relationships. So I invite you to consider it's that valuable and that important. Now, as I present these, you could say to yourself, well, I know that, or I do that, or I'm good at that, or I'm an attorney, I'm used to deposition, so I'm used to these types of things. And I invite you to think about it from the standpoint of what's the next level of mastery? If you were to engage at that particular level? Okay? So it says, the goal is to develop and enhance the value of interpersonal relationships. So I used to be a pharmaceutical rep, used to be a drug dealer, as my wife would say. And I used to sell Motrin. And there was one doctor that wouldn't prescribe Motrin. And I was just beside myself because everybody used Motrin. How many in this room have actually tried Motrin in one form or fashion ever in your life? Okay, so it's a pretty common product. So this doctor just wouldn't prescribe it and I was a little bit beside myself. So one day I walked in and said, doctor, would you share with me your perspective on your reasoning for not utilizing Motrin? And he says, do you know John Smith? John Smith was the Syntex representative. And Syntex made a drug called Naproxin and Naproxin was a competitor to Motrin. Well, John Smith was his brother-in-law. So he had said no more. So blood was thicker than water. And then I simply said, doctor, if Naproxin doesn't work for your patients, would you consider Motrin as a secondary choice for your arthritic patients or your pain patients? He said, absolutely. But it was because of his relationship that he simply went with that choice first. So how many of you have heard the phrase, people do business with people they know and like and trust? Okay. So again, we're going to come from that. What are some of those tools that will help us do that? So the first one, anybody mind reading? You know, Mark, would you read the first one aloud, just so I can get some other participation?
Send communication toolbox?
Yes, number one.
To show interest in what others think and believe, use open-ended questions. What are open-ended questions?
So I'll put that to the group. What's an open-ended question?
Where any answer is correct.
Where any answer is correct?
Yeah.
So what's an example?
People could, could, there's, give an example of something that they felt was important and someone else could give an example which really is not related, but it still is, it's important to that person.
So what I hear you saying is it's a descriptive answer and it could be different for different people. So what's an example of an open-ended question? Who can give me an example?
Why?
Why? So why did you decide to come today? Or why did we have pizza for lunch today? Or whatever it would be. So why is what we call a trigger word, that if you put it at the beginning of a question, it makes it open? So I'd actually like you to write that word down, if you don't mind. Why is one of the words that when you place it at the beginning of a question makes it open? One of the other keys to an open-ended question is it cannot be answered with a yes or a no. So what's another open-ended question? And you're now not allowed to use why? What? You know, what would you like to accomplish today? What's your favorite food? Those are, that's an open-ended question. Now, if you could, don't mind to indulge me, write the word what down. There's actually six words that when you place it at the beginning of a question. And I know this is a little grade school, but kind of bear with me, okay?
How, what, where, when, and why?
Great. So let's write them all down. Who, what, where, when, why, and there's one more.
How.
Okay. So we now have six words. And when you put them at the beginning of the question, it makes it open. So that's called the technique of an open-ended question. But I'm not so interested in the technique. I'm interested in what's beneath the technique. So the first three words, and number one is to show interest. So how many of you have ever heard of Stephen Covey? Stephen Covey wrote a book called The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And one of his seven habits is seek to understand, then be understood. What I ask the council to do is seek to be interested versus interesting. So when we're interested, it's others focused. And I encourage us all to be others focused. Why? Because they like that. Everybody's favorite subject is what?
Themselves.
Themselves. So if we're genuinely and authentically interested in other people, they like that. And open-ended questions allow us to show that we are. So who and what and where and when and why and how are those words that when you put them at the beginning of a question, makes it open? I'm also going to ask you to circle the word why. And I'm going to invite you and encourage you to almost never use that word ever again. So if I said, why were you late? Or why did you make that decision? Or why didn't you vote with us? Or something like that? What happens to that other person when you use a why question?
Defensive.
Yeah, they get defensive. So rather than engaging them in a collaborative way, why puts people on their heels, there's a sense of judgment, there's a sense of right and wrong, and we actually don't have to use it. So I could say, what were the factors that had you come to that conclusion? It's a lot more inviting, a lot more engaging than why'd you make that decision? You know, even if we're parents, we come home and say, why didn't you clean your room? Why didn't you do your homework? And when we put our kids on the heels, they kind of remove their receptivity with us a little bit. So who, what, where, when, why, and how shows we're interested versus interesting. You know, we could say so much less and people think we're even a better communicator when we do so. What are your thoughts about open-ended questions? How good are you at using them? I should be getting extra credit for my use of these things. Oh, he's really good at that. If you also don't mind, I'm going to interject through the course of our dialogue today of where and when we do or where and we don't. Like for instance, but we'll get to that in a few moments. So number two. So Robin, would you read number two, please?
To gain additional information regarding what they said, use part of their answer to create the next open-ended question. This technique is called layering.
So what vegetable has layers?
An onion.
An onion. So when you peel the outer layer of an onion, what do you find?
More onion.
More onion, another layer, another layer. So I, sometimes I ask that question, people come up with Brussels sprouts and cabbage and lettuce. But the bottom one is when we remove a layer, there's another layer. So there's this element of gaining depth. And the technique is take a piece of their answer and weave it into the other open-ended question. So John, what kind of vehicle do you drive?
I drive a Cadillac.
A Cadillac. And what model Cadillac do you drive?
Station wagon.
And what color is your station wagon?
Black.
Black. And what model year is your black station wagon?
2011.
2011, okay. So I was layering. I took a piece of his answer and I weaved it into another open-ended question. That's called the technique of layering. But for me to be able to layer, I must do what?
Be interested in.
I must be, I must be listening. So again, it's really kind of common sense, but here's a phrase for you to try on. When you listen to people, you honor them. So I tell my, you know, egomaniac business owners that I work with, when you listen to people, you honor them. And then I say, well, how do you feel when you're being honored? So Martin, how do you feel when somebody's honoring you?
How do I feel?
Yeah.
Embarrassed.
When you're being honored?
Sure.
Okay. Who else? How do you feel when you're being honored?
Proud.
Proud? Anyone else?
Grateful.
Grateful? Appreciative? No touched? I like it? Whatever it would be. So when we listen to people, truly and genuinely listen to people, we're honoring them, like what they have to say matters. And it's a way of gaining depth. So taking a piece of their answer means we actually listen to them so that we could even weave it into that question. Number three, I'll read that. It says, allow a period of silence following questions to allow each person to fully express their ideas and opinions. Sometimes I refer to that as the sound of silence. And for people my age, that was a Simon and Garfunkel song. But the sound of silence creates an opening and a space for people to express themselves. And what I'll suggest to you is when people can express themselves around you, they feel related. They can get a word in edgewise. You're waiting for them to share their point of view and their perspective. Number four. Mayor Shilling, would you read number four for us?
Closed-ended questions may be used for requesting support or for confirming facts.
So closed-ended questions have only two answers. They are the questions that have a yes answer or a no. Do you like pizza? Do you like pepperoni pizza? Are you hungry? Will the report be done by five o'clock? However, what I've seen in the business world is closed-ended questions are often disguises. And I'll give an example. So if I said, isn't it a beautiful day? What would you say?
Yes, it's a beautiful day.
Don't you think this conversation's going well so far? In some ways, that's a leading question. But very often, we use that as a form of minor domination. If you've ever been to a nice restaurant, you'll find that the waiters or waitresses ask open-ended questions. How's everything this evening? What else can I get for you this evening? If you go to a fast food restaurant or a restaurant that wants to turn the tables, do you need anything else? Is everything okay? So they're actually like, they don't want to have a conversation, they don't want to create a relatedness. And yet, there's a correlation between the relationship and the level of tip. If I'm at a restaurant with my wife and we have a very good relationship with a waiter or waitress, my wife will give me an elbow and say, it's at least a 20% tip. So it actually correlates with a better result. And yet, I want you to notice how you and others used open and closed-ended questions. Because sometimes our opinion is weaved into our questioning. Don't you think that strategy is a good idea? Well, I know you think it's a good idea. And so, so again, we're going to kind of monitor that a little bit. Number five is probably the most challenging of all them. John, would you read number five?
When listening, notice your inner voice. A, notice what your voice is saying. B, is this voice supportive or critical? C, are you open to what the other person is saying? D, what is good or valuable about what is being said?
In the profession of coaching, probably the single most important thing I try to accomplish with my clients is increased self-awareness. So when I say the phrase, an inner voice, what do I mean by that? So your inner voice is saying, what's it mean by inner voice? I don't have an inner voice. What do you mean?
Your instinct or your reaction.
Your instinct? It's that conversation, if you're awake, you have it going on. So if I said, what do you think of my tie? You would have an inner voice thing, that's all right, it matches his eyes, or whatever it would be. We actually have an inner voice about everything all the time. And all I'm asking you to do is notice it, pay attention to it, be aware of it. Because if we are aware of it and actually kind of capture that that's what's going on and that's what I'm thinking, we then can choose another perspective, another point of view, another approach to something. So it says, notice what your voice is saying. If your inner voice is supportive, I like this idea, this is good, I lean forward, I'm engaged. But if my inner voice is critical, that'll never work, that's a silly idea, that doesn't make any sense. That will either forward or get in the way of a relationship just by thinking it. I don't even have to say anything with that inner conversation I have. Now, I'm asking you to do the following. Are you open to what the other person's saying? So I'd like you to write these three words, and these are magic words for you to use with each other. Magic words are, try this on. So down the street, there's a man's warehouse. And I, I send my clients on an imaginary trip to get a new sport coat. And I send them to Butch, the guy over there. And Butch says, you know, Barry Kemp sent me. He says, oh, okay. And he looks the guy over and says, yeah, 44 regular? He said, yeah, I'll be right back. And if he comes out of the back with a banana yellow blazer and says, try this on. So what do you think the inner voice of my client's going to be?
No.
No way. Now, I'm not a Century 21 salesperson. No, I'm not going to try that on. No, he says, you know, try it on. See how it fits. What I'm asking you to do is try on the points of view and the perspectives of one another. What's good? What's valuable? What might work? Again, when you try something on, doesn't mean you bought it, doesn't mean you have to take it out of the store. It just said, I tried it on. Then we could find out what color you like, or does it need tailoring, or whatever it would be. But your openness and your receptivity to try on and to look at things through different points of view and different perspectives is critical for you to put yourself in somebody else's shoes. So I invite you to use those words with each other. I remember my son, one day I came home from work and my wife said to me, Daniel wants to talk to you about something really, really important. And he says, and she gave me the look. If I go upstairs and my son is ready to, you know, graduate high school and go to college. And we had saved up for him to go to a really good Michigan school, okay? And he says, Dad, sit down, I want you to try something on. It was one of those, please brace yourself, you're not going to like what I have to say. He says, Dad, I want to go to golf school. I want to go to golf college. And inside my inner voice is screaming like we saved money from the time you were a little kid. So he said, but he knew that he could get me to listen and try on and look at another point of view by simply saying, Dad, I'd like you to try this on. So our willingness to look through a different person's point of view is very critical for a relationship. We don't even have to agree, but if we can look at their point of view and their perspective and try it on and look for what's good or valuable, that goes a long way for their willingness to look at what we have to say. In fact, if you In fact, if you listen fully and completely to others and let them know they were gotten, you then can present your point of view because they're willing to feel and be open to what you have to say. And then you can see if you can come to some agreement. So the last one on this page, it says, please don't interrupt others while they're speaking. There is actually a good time to interrupt, however. And what I'd suggest is, a good time to interrupt is when you do not understand. So I tend to put my hand up in there and say, may I interrupt? I'm really not following with you or really don't understand what you had, what you were trying to say. So these six communication tools, I literally have been using these with every single client and myself for the last 17 years. I think it's the source of a happy marriage of 31 years. I have a 25-year-old son and a 23-year-old daughter that we get along terrifically. It seems to work in all my client organizations, and I offer this as a skill set and a toolkit for all of you. What I also like to suggest is, I want you to turn in your book to what we call the Wheel of Excellence. Looks like this. And during the course of our time today, we are going to create a little bit of a model. And this model is a single unified model of personal and/or organizational excellence. So you'll notice in blue, there's a ring. I call that the relationship ring. And just like a tire on your 2011 black Cadillac, the level of relatedness is like the level of air that's inside your tires. So if your tires are filled with air, your car can go down the road. If your relationships are broken or weak or suboptimal, you have a flat or you have a leak. And if you had a flat or a leak in your car, what would you do?
Fix it.
You would fix it. So you actually would have to take out your toolkit and you would fix your tire so that you could continue. In this case, I'm asking you to take out the communication toolbox to fix and to improve and to enhance your relationship. Because everything depends on that. Okay? So let's move over to the pivot technique. I am going to share with you and teach you, hopefully, all to coach yourself and to coach one another. And all you have to do is be able to count to three to do that. So the pivot technique is actually a self-coaching tool. You can actually use this as an individual yourself when nobody's around. But it works extremely well when you're working with other people or other groups. And it's based upon a concept called creative tension. So a gentleman named Robert Frisk, who wrote a book in the early 90s, wrote a book called The Path of Least Resistance. And he basically said, this idea of creative tension is nothing more than a gap between the current reality of a situation and a desirable vision for the future. And what he suggests is that the desirable vision for the future pulls and draws the current reality closer to it. A good example of creative tension is the favorite workday of the week of most working people. So what is the favorite workday of the week for most working people?
Friday.
Friday. So what does Friday represent for people? What's that?
Almost the weekend.
Almost where?
To the weekend.
So you've heard the phrase, I'm looking forward to the weekend. So when there's a desirable future in front of you, it has you be more engaged, more alive, more animated, happier. Now, what happens if I go from Friday to Sunday night? What happens to people Sunday evening? Martin?
Dread.
Dread. So what's in front of those people is this thing called Monday morning. I got to wake up early, I got to deal with traffic, I might have a job I don't care for. Even, even the phrase, a dead-end job is a job without a future. So I'm going to suggest that creative tension is always operating for all people all the time, and they don't know it.
But it could be different if someone is looking forward to something they're going to do on Monday.
That's true.
And Friday could be a day where they're thinking about the completion of a task they've worked on the whole week. So depending on the perspective of the person.
So what you're saying is, it depends on what's in front of you.
Right.
However, if what's in front of you is desirable, it will have you be that much. So think of all the great stuff that's happened in your life. The vacations you went to, the job promotions you've got, the graduating from school, getting your first job, getting promoted. Every one of those is associated with a new future. Think about the negative things, like going to the dentist or finding out that you have a disease or some negative thing that's in your future. An audit or whatever it would be. A deposition. So it's kind of like, well, what if we had some control? What if we decided what was going into our future on purpose rather than willy-nilly? What if I designed Monday to be a job that I love to do? What if Tuesday was something I looked forward to and not living for the weekend or living for retirement or live for some day? So as a council, you have the opportunity to design and articulate the future of Troy. That's a pretty cool job. And you get to say, here's where we are, my current reality with all its challenges, and yet, here's where we want to be. And if where we want to be individually and collectively is a better place, that will have us compelled and urged and optimistic toward working toward and progressing toward that future. So what I'm going to introduce is a simple three-step technique to use creative tension as a group or as an individual for the council to consider. So it says, the pivot point exercises are self-coaching tools to help you move in another direction by taking actions that are consistent with your commitment, not your comfort zone. When a problem is becoming apparent, when your comfort zone is emerging, stop, ask your quest, these three questions before acting. The first question is, what's actually happening or about to happen right now? What is the current reality? So that's all you have to do. Step one, say, what is the current reality? And guess what? We get to use those communication toolbox, open-ended questions and layering, to distinguish the current reality. What's working? What's not working? How do people feel? What's the morale? What's going on right now? So that's, they work hand-in-hand with each other. Step two says, what do I really want to happen right now that will serve my or our future commitment? What is the vision for the future? Though said another way, I could say, what's our goal? What's our objective? Where do we want to be? What outcomes are we striving for? Those are other open-ended questions that actually, if answered, will paint a picture of the future. So if I have distinguished through open-ended questions and layering my current reality, have done the same thing and identified a preferred future, I then can move to step three, which is, what new or different actions can I or we as a council take that will support me in achieving the results that I desire? I'm also going to suggest that we pivot all day long unknowingly. How many of you drive? What happens when your car's going off to the side of the road? What do you do?
Correct.
You correct it by changing the steering wheel. So you don't know it, but at the time, you're saying, the current reality is I'm going off the road, the vision for the future is to get to my destination, and the action I take is move my steering wheel a little bit. Where the current reality is I'm fast approaching another car, I want to stop safely, and so I put my foot on the brakes. You are pivoting. If you're hungry and your stomach is growling, that's your current reality. If your vision for the future is to satisfy your hunger, having a salad or a piece of pizza will be the action that you take. Same thing, if you're sleepy, everything's a pivot. Now, we don't think about those things because we just do them automatically. But as a council, you get to look at the current realities of any situation, any initiative within the city. You get to identify and align on a shared vision for the future. And as a group, you can brainstorm all the different behaviors and action steps that you can take. And if you're willing to try on and look for what's good or valuable and what other people are saying, we simply can count to three. And if our behaviors and actions are agreeable, we simply take those to see if we move closer to the committed vision. So one, two, three, repeat. So you could do this literally hundreds and thousands of times in the course of a typical week. I'm asking you to do this on purpose. So when you have an issue, break it apart into three buckets. Here's the current reality bucket, in all its glory. Here's the vision for the future bucket. Have we aligned around that? And what are we going to do to accomplish that? And if you have a facilitated and an open process, very often, you see that there are behaviors and actions each of us can take to move toward a better future. So what if my current reality was I was 15 pounds overweight and my vision would be fitting in my skinny jeans? What actions might I take?
Exercise.
I could exercise. So I'd be very specific in the kinds of aerobic exercises or strength training exercises or flexibility exercise. What else would I do?
Not eat the foods.
I would eat differently. I would have a nutritional component. What else might I do if I wanted to be healthy and fit?
Maybe a partner to do it with.
I would, I'd probably engage a workout buddy or hire a personal trainer or, you know, take walks in the evening with my wife. Something like that. What else could I do if I wanted to be healthy and fit? Who else might be an ally and a source of help in that area? I could go to the doctor, get a physical exam. What does going to the doctors give you, given what we just talked about? I go to the doctor, get my EKG, get my blood pressure, get all the blood work. At the end of that exam, what do I have?
Data.
I have a junkyard.
Very good. I've got my current reality. Now, my vitamin D is low and I have a little bit of a low-density lipoprotein alteration, da-da-da-da-da. So suddenly, the action is I take a vitamin D supplement and I take red yeast rice. How about that? So those are the actions I took to optimize my health. And now I get to go back for more blood work and cry because I don't like needles. But basically, that is a pivot. So I'm encouraging you to use those two concepts together. Open-ended questions, layering, listening, trying on what other people are saying as a set of tools with each other. And do it in three buckets. The current reality bucket, the vision for the future bucket, and the plan of action bucket. So again, the simpler these things are, the more internalizable they will be for you. What questions and thoughts do you have now? Where does this apply?
You want us to use these then when we work on our goals?
Yeah. See, a goal is nothing more than a what here? A goal is a vision for the future. So you can call them goals, you can call them visions, you can call them missions, you can call them objectives, you can call them outcomes. But there are someplace in the future that you want to get to. Whether they're financial or whatever. And there's ways of determining whether they're going to be measurable or not. So, questions, thoughts? You love it, don't you? Is everybody seeing my closed-ended question and disguising my opinion? So what do you think of this so far? That's another way of saying this. How are we doing? This is the silence part. Okay, let's move on. If you look at the Wheel of Excellence, in addition to relationship skills, I'm going to suggest that there are three other key soft skills that are essential for professional success, at least, if not personal success. And those are in yellow. And they include leadership and management and coaching. And actually, what we just did was we went through the coaching conversation. So if you can count to three, distinguish current reality, identify the shared vision, and create a plan of action, you've self-coached yourself. But what I'd like to do is have a dialogue about leadership. And in order to do that, I'm going to just ask you a question. Who is or was a great leader in your view? And they could be alive today or even deceased. And then we'll talk about what are those characteristics? Dane? Who is or was a great leader in your view?
Abraham Lincoln.
Abraham Lincoln. Okay, so let's keep that in mind. Who else?
John Wooden.
John Wooden, the basketball coach? Okay.
UCLA.
Great leader. Who else?
John Kennedy.
John Kennedy. Moore?
Luther King.
Moore, Luther King Jr., right? Okay, who else?
OSHA Beckler.
OSHA Beckler. Okay, who else?
Mary Katie Stanton. Elizabeth Katie Stanton has another name.
Okay, Elizabeth Katie Stanton. Other great leaders of our time or before our time. How about Jesus? There's actually a book called Jesus CEO. It's actually an excellent book. He's a great leader. Who else? Buddha.
General Eisenhower.
General Eisenhower. Okay? So if you think about all of those people that we just described, what were some of the characteristics that had them be great leaders? What did they all kind of have in common?
Vision.
They had a vision. What did they do with the vision?
They articulated it.
They articulated the vision. How do you know they were leaders, however?
Because people shared that same vision.
Other people shared that. So what I'd like to suggest is, that's the definition of leadership. What leaders do is they speak a vision or speak a future. But more importantly, they engender that future in other people. Which means that there's something inherent in other people where that future that is being spoken resonates and vibrates at the same frequency. But it works in two directions. I can speak a vision for the future, and if that resonates with you and you buy in, you're more than willing to follow. On the other hand, there's this thing called the elicitation of a vision. So you can elicit a vision from a citizen, you can elicit a vision from a colleague, you can elicit a vision from a friend. What would you like to have for dinner? Where would you like to go this weekend? If they answer that question, they're going to speak a future. And if you buy into what they're saying, we call that leadership. So what future are you speaking as council people? What, what future are we speaking? So when we speak about the goals, are we engendered in those goals? Do we understand? Are we compelled? Are we aligned around those goals? And if so, we call that leadership. If people want this future and some people want that future and some people want another future, then that's, leadership is actually not present. Three different futures were spoken, but they weren't engendered, they weren't aligned. So we need to find a way of coming together. And yes, we can use those communication tools to find out where there's wiggle room and where we can find consensus and alignment to move forward. To have that shared commitment provide leverage to do things differently, so to speak. So I invite you to consider that. That's the definition that we're going to use here. Great leaders. Moore Luther King said, I have a dream. So he could have said, I have a vision, or I see a vision. And when he spoke it, other people said, I have that vision too. I'm on board with that. If you look at management. Management is what I consider the tool that actually produces results. Leadership leaves us in a space of possibility. But if we can't turn possibility into reality, we pretty much don't have very much. We have a pipe dream. So if this is my vision for the future, what am I and what are we willing to do to make progress toward that future? And I have two magic words for you. The words are request and promise. If you have a strong sense that people have aligned on a vision for the future, what are you willing to promise or to do? Or what can you request of others that if they were to accept that, that would be a promise? So a request or a promise is direct and specific and it's measurable. So I request that you take a walk for 45 minutes every day at a pace of four miles per hour as part of your exercise routine. If I promised to do that and actually do it, the chances of me losing weight or being healthier and fit are more likely. So if you have gotten past step one, which is, we really have aligned on it. What are we going to do? What are we promising the citizens? What are we requesting of one another? And if they agree to that, that basically is the consummation. So if this is where I am, this is where I want to be, and I promised to take some action, I'm going to go, action, 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 new current reality. Vision for the future, action, action, action. So the idea that ongoing process is very iterative. Here's where I am, here's where I want to go, take a little progress. So that week, I might lose one pound, and yet, my vision is I want to be 20 pounds lighter. But if I am in action, take those behaviors each week through nutrition, through exercise, through all the other things that I've promised to do, I'm going to move closer and closer to that committed vision. So the same thing bodes true for any goal that you have as an organization or as a city council. So now we have the wheel, the relationship ring, leadership, which is speaking a future and aligning futures. We have management, which is requests and promises. And we now have coaching, which is one, two, three, current reality, vision, and action. Those four ideas are now applied to the triangle that you see in the middle of this page. And that triangle is what we call the structure for achievement. It's nothing more than the strategic and tactical plan you have for the city. Here's our vision for the city, here's the mission for the city, here's the goals that we have for the city, here's the scoreboards we use to show progress against those, and here's the action steps that we and our staff and others are going to take in order to achieve that. So that's the model. I'd like you to consider that that model is like a contact lens. And if I could, I would insert that contact lens in every one of your eyes. And as you looked at the city, you would see what was present and you would see what was missing. And if something was missing, you'd be able to put it in or have others put in what's missing. They either put in better and improved relationships, they would put leadership into place because it was missing, they put an effective empowered management structure in place, or they provide ongoing supportive coaching to move that forward. We could have goals that aren't clear and articulate. We could have metrics that aren't defined. We could have action steps that aren't even clarified or they're not being taken. So again, this is a single kind of unified kind of model about that. Now, we have 35 minutes now. You have everything I've got. So I'd like to go back to the documents that some of you provided, which are the Troy's Future Vision 2020 and the other documentations as a context for our conversations in and around goals. And if we could put those into some of these categories, what are goals or initiatives are in place that have been agreed to? What's working with regard to those? So that you can begin to narrow your focus as a council. So John, how would you like to go from here?
I think that perhaps taking a look at what the individual task forces came up with for their visions or goals and then having a commentary or narrative thereon may be helpful, but it's really up to the mayor and council to decide how they wish to proceed.
Well, actually, I didn't envision us looking at the Troy Futures and taking those visions and doing goals. I envisioned us looking at goals. We've had three goals that were in place over the past few years. Yes. And we wanted to change some of those because some of the wording in it was not applicable now. We haven't really changed our mission statement. So we need to have goals that actually fit with our mission statement. And then Mary gave us at our last meeting something from Grand Haven City Council where they did their goals in a visual form.
Okay.
And so I was looking at something more specific. Now, others can say, of course, as they wish on this.
Okay. Well, how about if we start with the current reality? So the current reality is the city council has a mission. Does anybody have a copy of that that they could review? Dane, would you mind reading that aloud?
The mission statement is to provide public service to people in a friendly, professional manner so that they appreciate the experience and can expect to be served that way again.
That's actually for the staff. Staff mission. But that is a good mission. Yes.
Okay.
And that's what we, as a council, encourage staff to do.
Sure.
Well, when I looked on the website and I'm right next to city council was this mission statement. So I assumed it was ours and I think the public probably would assume that that was ours. And I thought it was very good, so that's why I printed it. But it's right next to council.
Mayor, Councilwoman Furman?
Well, I think it just brings up the point that we haven't, as a body, as a team council, talked about vision, mission, and goals in a long time. I think that it would be the same for a vision. We have on here, Barry, on your Wheel of Excellence.
Right.
Your definition that you have is a view of the future that inspires and energizes.
That's right.
And I was hoping we might have an opportunity to talk about that vision. It's not asking for a rehash of that. We've all read 2020. That current, that is very inspiring. It's not our current reality. But for us as leaders to come up with an "I have a dream" moment or a vision that does inspire and does energize is something that we have not yet done and we need to do.
If I may just take a little bit of privilege and share what the structure for achievement means to me and how I've used it and how it would relate to the city. One of the things that's a little bit difficult in the business world is when you talk about vision and missions and goals, many business leaders kind of really poo-poo that. They say, "Well, let's get to the metrics, let's get to the scoreboards, let's get to the results, let's get in action." And they tend to be very impatient in their pursuit of that. And what I have found over the years is that vision is incredibly important. In fact, the book that Jim Collins wrote before he ever wrote Good to Great was called Built to Last. And what he found out by evaluating companies is vision and values-based companies outperform standard market companies based upon stock price by a factor of 14-fold over a period of 50 years. When I talk about this idea of vision, vision really kind of comes down from the very fundamental values that we share, whether it's honesty or integrity or hard work or community or partnership or teamwork or collaboration. Whatever those values are, they're what brings human beings together. And when we take a look at mission, missions basically are futures for groupings of people that are, what is the future that we as a group in this room today are committed to? So when we think about a mission, a mission is just that. It is our collective purpose. It's consistent with our values and beliefs and commitments and priorities, but it's unified in a focused area. So the two things that people need to do while you're facilitating a mission is you need to understand both the stakeholders of who benefits and is contributed to by that mission and what is it the future that those stakeholders are interested in. So if you think about your purpose, what future do we make possible for the citizens of Troy? What future do we make possible to the other communities in our region? Who else are the stakeholders? And then what futures are they compelled or attracted to? Again, we're still using creative tension here. So the better we're able to identify who are the stakeholders you're all committed to forwarding and what future you're interested in them achieving or experiencing, facilitating and wordsmithing a mission around that will give you the power of a unified collective purpose. And when we have that unified purpose, it has us individually and collectively be willing to operate differently. I have a favorite quote, and some of you may know it. It's on every page of my website, it's on my business card. It says the following, "When patterns are broken, new worlds will emerge." So whether it's a vision or a mission or a goal, it's your articulation of what new world you want to emerge. And because of that new world and because of that new future, it gives you individual and collective leverage of doing things differently. So who's familiar with the definition of insanity? Yeah, if I do the same thing over and over and expect a different result, that would be insane. Nobody really wants to go outside their comfort zone. They really don't want it. And whether you're 30 years old, 40 years old, 50 years old, or whatever it is, we created that comfort zone, whether it's as a community or as individuals, over large numbers of years. The only reason people go outside their comfort zone is because of a higher level of commitment. We would run into a burning building for a family member. We would risk our own lives if somebody we cared about was drowning. We would do those things. So the reason for vision, the reason for missions, the reason for purpose is to say, "That's a future that I can achieve doing what we're currently doing right now. We're just not getting there." And individually, as a person myself and collectively as a group, what do we need to do differently outside our individual or collective comfort zones to achieve the vision that we're committed to? So whether it is a vision, whether it is a mission, or whether it is a specific goal, every one of those is a future. And the more you're committed to that future, the more you can identify progress toward that future in scoreboards, the more you can see what behaviors and what actions are required in order to achieve that. Do you have a new document?
No, no, actually. And what this is, is focused on the details after we set the mission and the goals, which is broader, then the action which staff has to take to implement those goals. And as a council, most of the time for the items for our council meetings, we're focused on a specific agenda item where we are approving or disapproving or asking questions about. And we're not looking at the broad picture. And so what Mary is saying, we haven't sat down as a group together to do the broad picture things in quite a few years because we've been so focused on the details of how do we get from here to there. So we want to change direction for some, for this meeting and looking at broader types of things. And use some of the skills that you have to eliminate.
Those are things that I can assist with. There are various vision exercises that you can do on an individual basis. When you do individual vision work, you can look at the overlap and consistency that exists between you as individuals. When we look at the mission, we would simply have you identify those stakeholders that are absolutely essential to serve and contribute to. And then you'd have to put yourself in the shoes of each of those stakeholders to say, "What do we want? What do we benefit? What's the future that we get?" And then you would articulate and actually facilitate and, you know, actually wordsmith a mission statement that would forward that.
Mayor? Councilwoman Furman? I guess somewhere, I mean, I'm still frustrated. I just sensed there was a communication breakdown in somewhere. Because I thought the idea of holding the study session was to develop a shared vision and goals. I understand the mission is what we are doing and we can see some of that on the website in the budget document. But where are we going? I think one of the things that was so important when Councilmember Beltramey asked us to look once again and read for our previous meeting, Vision 2020, is that we are kind of veering off the road, as Coach Demp talks about, that we were going along a certain way and certainly our stakeholders and members of our community said, "Here's a preferred future." And yet, we veered off into the, "Now we must be sustainable." And it seemed as if we've somehow veered into just, "We will be the last city standing" kind of piece, which is neither invigorating or visionary or any of those descriptors that come here. It says, "The future that inspires and energizing, energizes." Well, what that does is really give us the hunker-down mentality that I think that we've been operating in for a while. And it's not satisfying, not to leaders, nor to citizens, nor does it keep that promise, Coach Demp, that you spoke about to your stakeholders or citizens or those who did this. And it does seem to be at odds with other pieces that, again, thank you, Councilwoman Beltramey, 21(c)(3), which talks about the things that we know are the assets of the 21st century community. So I was hoping that a study session where we were able to, with a facilitator, able to generate ideas of what do we want to look like? What would be an inspiring future? What would be an energizing future? And what would honor the input that we've had from our residents, for example, in 2020? And that hasn't yet happened.
Yes, and I'm in full agreement with you. I think that one of the things that, one of our goals that we should have is that residents and people who work here, have a business here, would be comfortable with the fact that we're achieving the services that are needed for this community and that we've been able to sustain those with the revenues to provide those services. If there are unknowns that are out there, I think it makes people uncomfortable. And I think that that's what has happened. We've had unknowns and we've been uncomfortable because of that. Whereas before, we felt very secure in our position and what we were providing and how we were reaching out toward the future. So I think that we need to articulate, again, that a main goal for any city is to have, providing the services that are necessary for the community to give good service.
One of the ways of looking at this is almost if you go back to Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. You know, the highest level is simply self-actualization. And everybody strives for that. And yet, there's a certain element of tremendous survival that's going on for people. So, you know, basic needs and food and water and making sure you're safe and infrastructure. So I think what's happened is because of whatever's going on in the economy, people are ratcheting back down to say, "What's the next level that I must have? What's the next level I must have?" And if they don't have the basic level, it's very difficult to kind of go to the highest level and say, you know, "We want self-actualization" when we're having a hard time staying in our homes or our roads or can't get to work without having a challenge here and there. So I think it's useful to have both. And at the same time, what I would suggest is that as a council, we have to progress. It's never going to be perfect, but are we progressing? Are we taking ground? Are we moving forward? Are we in action? Are those actions moving us closer and closer to even those small bite-sized goals or bite-sized visions or whatever it would be? When we are doing that, then that vision for the future is that eventuality, so to speak. And yet, we need little wins and little victories and little elements of progress so that we can feel encouraged. But there's a saying, "Why do most people wake up in the morning?" And this is very crass, but it says, "They wake up in the morning because they didn't die in their sleep." So we're not, we're trying not to not be dead, as to be fully alive. So the optimization is to be fully alive in a very vibrant community, absolutely. And yet, we need to progress toward that at whatever chunk that we can have on an individual basis. So as, you know, whatever level you can grasp your hands around and say, "We can be empowered by this goal, we can be in action about this goal, we can measure progress against this goal," knowing full well that we're still shooting for the stars, so to speak. So both are useful, and yet, from a practicality standpoint, you're going to have a hard time convincing people to spend lots of time and energy on something further removed unless you're dealing with the practicalities of the here and now. It's just kind of what I observed when organizations go through desperate budget cutting and challenges like that. But it's still inside the context of, you know, "We want to be that." Because it gives you more fuel in your tank and more get-up-and-go to do the next small win. How do you eat an elephant? You know, one bite at a time. So you get to decide, "Well, here's the elephant that you want and what are the bites that we're going to take? And how are we showing progress to the citizens that we're doing a good job?"
Mayor?
Councilwoman Guinness?
I guess I just wanted to ask a question about what the background was as to how we got these three in the first place, not being here. Was this a...
We had five at one point. And then we joined some of them together so that we would come up with just three goals. And you'll notice that for other cities, a lot of the times, they had three rather than five because we felt that those were attainable. Do you want to read those three for us and see what we want to change?
And were these a result of multiple discussions? multiple discussions just like this?
As a group like this, yes.
The ones that we currently have are, number one, Troy has enhanced the health and safety of the community. Number two, Troy adds value to properties through maintenance or upgrades of infrastructure and quality-of-life venues. Number three is Troy is rebuilding for a healthy economy reflecting the values of a unique community in a changing and interconnected world. And I think that to some extent, I was just, I was just trying to figure it out because, I mean, number three, Troy is rebuilding for a healthy economy reflecting the values of a unique community in a changing and interconnected world. I think that that still applies, I mean, to some extent. But I think that these, they maybe need a little bit of tweaking. I just wasn't sure about how we got to these in the first place. I mean, I kind of came prepared today with all sorts of things that I wanted to kind of throw out there and see what people, you know, what people were kind of thinking in terms of maybe creating some that are new or a bit more pertinent to where we are now. But I didn't know if that's where these originally came from or...
Maury, would you do me a favor? Would you just share what you put together?
Oh, jeez. Well, I... I mean, I don't, I don't want to do, I just, you know, I, you kind of, I think you really put into perspective what we're all struggling with on our, on our own. And I think coming together, we want to have something to work towards. We want to have something that's positive and something that's inspiring. But at the same time, we all sit at the table and all day, week after week, because most times it is week after week. And we have to be reasonable. And, you know, we're dealing with a lot of very reasonable day-to-day concerns about the here and now and the economy as it's happening right now. So I think, you know, we kind of struggle trying to make those two things mesh. And I wasn't sure exactly how we could put that into specific outcomes. You know, I think we really need to kind of focus on just improving our general sense of community, which is not really something that you see on there.
So from an outside person's perspective, I don't know what your scoreboards are. I don't know what how to play the game. I don't know what winning the game looks like at all. So if you read this, Troy has enhanced health and safety of the community, you would have to clarify what that means to me. You would also have to clarify... You would also have to clarify how would we measure whether we were taking ground and making progress there. And then you'd be able to say, yes, we should be doing these things, because it's going to put and move the scoreboard forward. So we don't play a single game without a scoreboard. So if these are the goals, they might need tweaking, but what I would need as an outside observer to say is, how do we know how to play this game? How do we know we're making progress to these? How do we keep score? And are those the right things that we should be measuring, and the right things we should be doing? So when I ask you to share what you have, it's kind of like, well, okay. You know, what are the things that you have in mind, and is that a scoreboard? Or could that be measurable? Or how does that fit? Is it added, or is it instead of any of these others? And I'm okay just to, you know, I'm good with winging it and dancing to the tune that we're playing. But, you know, I have a sense that there's some frustration that you're just not making progress fast enough.
Well, I guess that's the confusing, because I kind of envisioned that there would be, you know, whiteboard or something, and that we would be able to talk about shared vision for the future, and the vision would have to come first. It would be the same as your gold medal athletes. You don't have them show up at the games, and they say, well, what kind of sport are you interested in? You really need to have that clarified before you set up the regu, you know, how we're going to achieve that gold medal. So I think the idea of today's session, or a future session, would need to include the brainstorming piece that you're talking about, Maureen, where you begin to flow some of the goals. But I still think the idea of the core values and sharing that for the community as a large vision is the most important critical piece that we've not done. And the vision is what we're aiming for a future. The mission is what we are doing now. And the goals are those things that we're going to address as we go forward. But those, all of that, needs to come through a dialogue with us. And we haven't gotten to that.
Well, the venue...
We haven't staged that yet.
People often refer to the idea of a leadership retreat. I don't like that word at all. I call them leadership advances, because you don't want to go backwards, you want to go forward. But simply having the amount of time and energy and effort to roll up your sleeves and come in on a Saturday, and not leave for twelve hours, and do what you need to do to get the job done. An hour and a half venue, which we have this evening, you know, can say that that's something that we want, and that we're going to put things in place to pursue those types of things. But a vision for the future is absolutely essential to have as that north star of what we're moving toward. Even if the small things we do on a day-to-day basis are little baby steps toward that. We do need to say, we are actually progressing. There's a way of measuring that we're taking ground. So you need absolutely crystal-clear scoreboards, so we can feel encouraged by our progress.
Councilmember Beltrameini and Councilmember Slater both had things they wanted to add in there, so. Go ahead, either one of you.
Did I? I share some of the... I went to our website, I didn't even know what our goals were. I've never heard anybody talk about them here at council, I don't know how we ever got them. And I went, and I found these three things, and they made absolutely no sense to me. And most, I've dealt with goals and objectives my whole career. And you've always had one attached to the other. You have, soon you have objectives, how you get to the goals. And when I saw this, I said, well, we certainly need to work on this, because this is terrible. And then I looked at the mission and vision that was attached to City Council, and I thought these were ours. And when I read them, I wonder, why, why would the city have different mission statements and vision statements than City Council? It seems that we should be together, on our vision and our mission. This kind of made sense to me, I didn't know why, why they had all this stuff, and we had nothing. I thought these were ours. But I also, I did, I did my homework, I came here prepared tonight to talk about, I put together strategic goals and objectives, I got four of them.
Do you want to read those four?
No, I don't.
We're trying this on.
When I heard we're going to do this in two hours, I says, there's no way in the world we can do this in two hours. We couldn't get a mission statement in two hours, probably. So the thing that I think we need to do tonight, I really, I really liked what you did with the coaching. It's something that I try to do in my life. I'm successful sometimes, and sometimes I'm not, but I come from a world that, that's where I come from, at least. But I am now frustrated, because I thought we were going to come here, and we were going to work, and we were going to try to do a mission statement at least, and I, and I think we need to work in conjunction with the city management, that we're all on the same page here. I like their mission statement, I like their vision statement, and I think we should be the same. We give direction to the city, we should be together on this, you know, and we work for the people. You know, it's pretty simple what our mission is. We work for the citizens, it's really simple. But I think tonight, we can't accomplish what I think we were going to accomplish tonight. We need another session. I've done my homework, I would encourage everybody to come back again at another one, and be prepared to put together goals and objectives. I have four. And if I could just digress just for a couple more, and then I'll shut up. I read this futures, and I was so impressed that our community came together and did this. And I feel so sorry for them now, because of all the work that they did. And when I read through this, and I made notes, and I don't know who can ever do this again, because of where we are today. Things have changed so much in five years. In 2005 to 2010, that most, most everything in here is all tied to continuing revenue. And when you look at all of the suggested actions that they suggest in here, eighty to ninety percent of them are tied to our amenities. And if we lose our amenities, this fails. It cannot even be remotely successful, because it's all tied together. So this is, this is wonderful, and I don't know if you got a chance to read it, but it's, it's a great job by a lot of good people, and I feel bad. I really feel bad, because of where we are today.
Yes, people worked very hard, even getting to the point of bringing the group together to do that. And people were very encouraged and energized to look toward the future. But we didn't foresee what was going to happen with the valuation of homes and the decline in revenues. So then, we were at a point, and when you and Maureen came on council, you came on at a point where we were at a place where we had to make some decisions to do the most basic things. Okay? And so if we're changing our vision statement to reflect, are we doing it for goals and vision based on the basic things that we need to provide? Or are we going to look toward a period ten years out, or fifteen years out, where revenues may change? I think that's what we need to decide as a group, and that's where our frustration comes in. Because for many of us that have been involved for many years, we had grander ideas. But we've had to do a lot of things for downsizing, just as businesses and just as families have had to do, because that was the reality of the situation. So we're looking at the reality, but then we want to go from the reality to where we want to be. Robyn, you wanted to say something, and then you gave a floor to Dean.
I have a couple of, I have a couple of things. I, I've read the mission statement that was developed by staff, and I won't go into the history of this council trying to come up with a vision, mission statement. But I don't believe that our job as leaders is to perpetuate a high-quality vending machine. I don't think that's a vision for the leaders of the community who want to see our citizens realize this vision. And if you look at this vision, it is dependent upon amenities to some extent, but it is more dependent upon citizens working within themselves and with each other than anything else. And I think that we should be to use the opposite of the vending machine. We should be a high-quality burn-raising committee in all of this, as leaders. And we need to set a vision that is wanting to be a high-quality community in the 21st century, reflecting 21st century values and processes. And to that end, then we set a mission and a set of goals and/or outcome statements that articulate that, and put us on a path to achieve that vision, as opposed to last community standing. And without that big, broad, I want to get there kind of vision, we will continue to talk about which five-dollar bill to spend. And that really is John's job. We just okay that. But figuring out which five-dollar bill to spend is John's job. Inspiring and articulating to the community where we want to and need to go to continue to have us be a grand place to live, work, play, and learn, is our job. That is our job, as I see it. And we need a meeting for the vision, and then we need a series of meetings to articulate a pathway of outcomes and goals to get there, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, because we set the policy, and then they, we say what we want, and they have to do it.
And it has flipped, though. It's flipped from, oh, looky, here we are, so now we are. As you talk about the last city standing, shouldn't we be proud? Well, I don't think that speaks to the core values of the community. I don't think that speaks to anybody who moved to Troy. It was never to. And it doesn't speak to that win-win of Covey, that was mentioned earlier, as a great leader. If other cities are saying, and Little Grand Haven, look at that, the goals of Grand Haven, which inspire and motivate, and are revisited, so that other communities are saying, this is where we're going, and where, yeah, but look at us, we'll still be here. That is not going to attract residents, it's not going to attract businesses, it's not going to attract anyone. And what it does is breed that dissatisfaction, that sense of, what are you doing? Hey dude, who took my city, kind of thing that we hear. So Coach Dent, when you talk about the, what do you see in the reality out there? That bucket out there is filled with distrust and disenchantment. And I think in some of the things that Councilmember Beltrameini brings up, in going back to the barn-raising model, where these excited people who built a city to be proud of, to move in, to live in, to thrive in, many of those, I think, are ready to raise some barns. And I think that that community engagement piece isn't in any of the goals. It's not in the mission, and it's not in the vision. And it's up to us, I think, through facilitation, to have that kind of conversation where we literally can bang out some of these ideas and share some. I think it is, it would, it would not be good to lay some goals down on the table until we have, where do we want to, what do we want to look like, and where do we want to go conversation. We haven't been able to have that during this session.
Anybody else? Well, we've come to seven o'clock, we haven't... I think that thinking about how we're going to approach our interaction with each other and with the community in general was good. But I do think that we do need to have some time where we sit down and work on the goals together of... So we're at council, do you want to plan another session? What do you want to do?
I actually, I have a proposal. What I would propose is doing what the two of you did, but having everybody do it. There's no wrong way, right way, to do what you want to do. Standing for what you want, and continuing working toward what you want will get you there. I think it's important that each of you consider weighing in on what is your vision for the future of Troy? What are your goals? What do you see as the priorities? What do you recommend? If you were the only grand poopa of Troy, and you got to say what it was going to be, I'd like to see what you would all come individually to a meeting and say, here's what I came up with. And we are going to be open, we're going to be receptive, we're going to listen to what other people, we're going to try on what they're saying, and we'll look for the congruency and the consistency and the overlap that we have. These are very challenging, long-term, facilitative processes for organizations. There are six months, year-long, two-year-long initiatives that we engage in. And it's very difficult to do it, you know, piecemeal, with an hour and a half there, or whatever it would be. But one of the ways that you can expedite that is if you all came together, use these questions, answer these questions. This will give you the fuel for, where are we? Where are we going? What's great? What's our vision? What would it break for the future? If you answered these questions, and came with your own ideas and priorities that were as specific as possible, you could throw them all up on the table, you could do your whiteboarding, and begin to take a look at, oh, there's a lot of commonality here, a lot of consistency there. And then we can work out some of those other details. But it's going to be messy before it's going to get cleaned up. And if you're okay with the organics of a messy thing, you'll get a lot on the board, and you'll see a lot of areas of commonality, and a lot of consistency, knowing full well that we're going to walk out of there with alignment and agreement around some real fundamentals that have some power for you. But I would encourage all of you to do the homework, and to be actually very generous and share, here's what I came up with, and this is what my thinking is, and this is my dream. I mean, there's all kinds of little exercises that you can do to facilitate this thing. But if all of you do some thinking ahead of time and come prepared, it'll expedite whatever process you decide to go through.
And we could do it at one of our council meetings in November. I have a shortened agenda at the beginning, and then...